I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our invocation, invocation tonight will be Carrie Schneider from Promise Land Preschool.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to come and open up your meeting in prayer this evening. But before we pray, I'd like to invite the entire council and the community to come to worship at Christ Church of Fountain Hills tomorrow for our worship night as we celebrate our risen King this holy week. We'd love to have you come. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening thankful for the unique town of Fountain Hills. We are blessed to live in your gorgeous creation full of life and beauty. We thank you, Lord, for these elected leaders who have chosen to serve. Bless them as they lead with honesty and integrity. Lord, may we as a council and community come together this evening seeking your wisdom to make the best decisions that honor you and give dignity and value to the citizens who live here. May your will be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Town Clerk, road call, please.
Mayor Friedel.
Present.
Vice Mayor Toth.
Present.
Councilmember Earl.
Present.
Councilmember Cali Viannakis.
Here.
Councilmember Watts.
Here.
Councilmember McMahon.
Here.
Councilmember Skilicorn.
Here.
Thank you. Before we get started with our statement of participation, there's going to be some changes on the agenda tonight. Items nine C and D will be addressed separately, and item nine E has been removed from the agenda for tonight. Town Clerk, statement of participation, please.
Anyone wishing to address the council regarding items listed on the agenda or under the call of the public should fill out a request to comment card located in the back of the council chambers and hand it to the town clerk prior to consideration of that agenda item. Once the agenda item has started, late requests to speak cannot be accepted. And when your name is called, please approach the podium and speak into the microphone and state your name and if you are a resident for the public record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. It is the policy of the mayor and the council to not comment on items brought forth under the call of the public. However, staff can be directed to report back to the council at a future date or to schedule items raised for a future council agenda. It is also requested that applause be kept to a minimum to avoid disruption of the meeting to maintain decorum and provide for an equal and uninterrupted presentation.
Thank you. And before we start our reports by mayor, council members, and town manager, the town manager and the town attorney will be joining us shortly. So we'll start our reports with Councilwoman Earl.
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Councilwoman Cali Viannakis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, good evening, everybody. It's so nice to see such a full audience here again tonight to be here with us for your town council meeting. I'd like to greet the people on YouTube and streaming and on Cox Channel 11. Thank you also for attending our meeting. We have a new kind of expedited program for the beginning of your meeting, so instead of going through a report of what I've done the last couple of weeks, I would just like to bring everybody's attention to something I think is critically important. In the back of the room, I put these little flyers. It says, "Making Every Day Awesome." Fountain Roots and Iron Roots Strength have a blood drive scheduled for the ongoing months coming up to the summer, all the way to November. It's very important that people give blood. There's a new gentleman named Paul Hines who is running this program now. He asked me if I could be kind of their spokesman and get the word out that there's a critical need for blood in our community. Blood donations are there for transfusions, for cancers, for surgery, chronic illnesses, and traumatic injuries. It's up to us, the healthy people, to give, to give blood so the people that aren't so fortunate will have that resource available. And so, like I said, these are at the back of the room. Pick them up, get the date, schedule an appointment, and you'll be making a difference to people whose lives need it. And so, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was my report.
Thank you. Councilman Watts?
It's a quiet week, nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilman Skilicorn?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Thank you.
McMahon?
I'd like to thank Ted Blank and his group. His volunteer group completed the repainting of the black parts of the Ballard lights in Fountain Park the other day. It took three Sundays and a total of about 12 hours, roughly 20 volunteers. "We think the lights look pretty good," he said, "and we successfully eliminated 90% of the upward reflected light without reducing any light on the path around the lake." Neighbors on the hill overlooking the park said they could immediately see where we stopped painting a couple of weeks ago, and the difference was obvious. Now, all 287 lights are refreshed. So, thank you very much, Ted, and your volunteers. It's appreciated. Thank you. Also, I attended Oakley Creative Care, Open House, and Chandler showcasing their new large building that will include a medical clinic. They provide help and assistance for families on the dementia journey. And they are looking to come out to Fountain Hills to have a satellite facility here. We're helping him, them facilitate that, so hopefully that will be happening, hopefully sooner rather than later. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No report this week, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I had the pleasure of attending the Dark Sky Reception at the Artist Gallery on the Avenue. It was really successful, and if you haven't been in that artist gallery, they have some nice little handmade artwork that they're actually selling on behalf of the Dark Sky Discovery Center. So make sure you check that out. I attended the mayor's lunch in Apache Junction. Our law enforcement committee met. I spoke with a group of realtors in town dealing with our capital projects and what we're, what we're doing on Parkview and Verde River. I attended a Community Is Unity kickball and barbecue event that was hosted by Brandon Wise and his Wise Agents up at Four Peaks. And it was a great community event, and it was well-attended. We also had Music Fest this past week. We had music on the avenue as well. We had a budget workshop, and I was able to do a Friedel Friday video with Dr. Kane from our school district where we highlighted some of the great things that are going on in our, in our school district. I also had the pleasure of attending the scholarship award ceremony that was hosted by our own Fountain Hills American Legion Post 58. They literally gave out almost $20,000 worth of scholarships. So, the American Legion Post, the Marine Corps League, and the American Legion Sons of the American Legion Post 58 were all the presenters of those awards. So we had a lot of great honorees, and those students really deserved it. And then I held my third coffee with the mayor that was well-attended. That was yesterday, and we had about 50 people there. So we talked again about capital improvement projects, road work, and there were a lot of good questions asked by the audience. And now we'll move on to proclamation, so we have an outstanding achievement that our vice mayor is going to read and present. Is Ava Born in the audience? Okay. There she is. There she is.
Congratulations, Ava. We're recognizing Ava Born for her outstanding achievements in wrestling. Whereas Ava Born of the Fountain Hills High School Wrestling Team has demonstrated exceptional athletic ability, perseverance, and sportsmanship through the 2024 through 2025 wrestling season. And whereas Ava Born competed in the girls' sectional state qualifier, showcasing her remarkable wrestling skills and earning first place overall in her division. And whereas Ava began her season with an impressive performance, winning all three of her matches in her first tournament and receiving the Outstanding Wrestler Award among approximately 80 participants. And whereas Ava's versatility in wrestling, including her expertise in grappling and powerful takedown, has established her as one of the top competitors in the state. And whereas, there's a few more, bear with me. And whereas, a mutual relationship with Fountain Hills High School head coach Luke Salzman, Ava has displayed unwavering dedication and toughness securing a historic victory as the first sectional champion in the Fountain Hills Wrestling Program's history. And whereas Ava entered the sectional tournament with a 13-2 record, pinned her opponent in the championship match, and advanced to the state tournament with a 15-2 record, earning a second seeded placement in her bracket. And whereas Ava achieved an extraordinary feat by securing second place at the 2025 Arizona Intersthelastic Association Wrestling State Championships, bringing pride and recognition to Fountain Hills. And whereas Ava's achievements serve as an inspiration not only to female wrestlers but to all athletes and members of the Fountain Hills community. Now therefore I, well, Jerry, along with the council on behalf of the town of Fountain Hills, do hereby recognize and commend Ava Born for her exceptional accomplishments in wrestling and extend our best wishes for continued success. In witness whereof, we appear and set our hands and hold the official seal of the town of Fountain Hills.
Now we'll move on to the mayor's business spotlight. Tonight, it's my pleasure to recognize Vicki Dirksen and the night sky tourist business here in our town. Vicki has created and hosted several events to educate and promote the dark skies on behalf of the town, to include the International Moon Night Gemide Meteor Shower Watch Party, which I was at, and that was very good. The planet gazing. She serves on the board of the International Dark Sky Discovery Center. Vicki is one of the Star Dudes. Maybe we need to change that name. A group of local night sky enthusiasts who give stargazing experiences at Adaro Resort and partners with the Sonoran Conservancy to offer stargazing hikes. Vicki is so well-known that last year she met with journalists from Spain who were spending a month in Arizona and Utah to write a story about the dark sky movement. She drove them all around Fountain Hills one night. Of course, it had to be at night. Met them for an interview the next day, and then a couple of weeks later, they came back to do a photo shoot. And the article has now been published in the Norwegian and Italian magazine. So, we want to congratulate her, and I'm going to read this, and then I'm going to have you come up and get this, and then say a few words about your business, Vicki, okay? "In recognition of your outstanding contribution to the town of Fountain Hills, this certificate celebrates your dedication to excellence, innovation, and community engagement. Your commitment to quality and service has not only strengthened our local economy but also enriched the lives of residents and visitors alike. The town of Fountain Hills is proud to honor you as a business, your business as a vital part of our community's growth and success." So congratulations, come on up.
Well, what I do here in Fountain Hills would not be possible were it not for our very special and precious dark skies and that we have had unanimous support in this community for years. I believe, what, seven or eight years now, Joe, of the efforts to protect the dark skies here. And so I want to thank the council, the councils that came before this, who had the foresight for it. And we're thrilled to provide stargazing up at Adaro Scottsdale Resort on Friday nights, as Jerry said. And we do private stargazing events if anybody wants to host something at their home or, you know, for a private party, something like that. It's really, really fun. So, we've got a couple of Star Dudes here tonight, other than myself. I'm, I got dubbed a Star Dude. Ted Blank and Tony Pistilli, if you guys could just kind of stand up and say hi to everybody. You guys have probably seen them in advance. We have two other Star Dudes, Scott Adams and Ken Cotter, who couldn't be here tonight. And Jeff Yazetta is kind of our backup, and you guys have probably seen him around here. So, thank you.
Okay, so now we have, it's kind of a theme, I think, this week for our meeting. So now we have a proclamation, and this is going to be accepted by John Kraft, but this proclamation is for International Dark Sky Week. So I'm going to start with, "Whereas the aesthetic beauty and wonder of a natural night sky is shared heritage of all humankind, and whereas the experience of standing beneath a starry night sky inspires feelings of wonder and awe and encourages a growing interest in science and nature, especially among young people and out-of-area visitors within the local communities. And whereas light pollution has scientifically established economic and environmental consequences which result in significant impacts on the ecology and human health of all communities. And whereas Arizona hosts 10% of the world's largest telescopes, including the world's largest optical telescope, and many of the world's most revered observatories, including the Lowell Observatory, the Smithsonian Astrophysical Observatory, Whipple Observatory, the University of Arizona's MMT, and Large Binocular Telescope Observatories, Kitt Peak National Observatory, the Vatican Observatory, and in the future, the International Dark Sky Discovery Center, right here. And whereas the optical astronomy, which is both hindered and endangered by unfettered light pollution, represents a statewide capital investment of more than 1.3 billion and an annual economic return of over $250 million, including an indirect attachment to more than 150,000 jobs through the aerospace and defense sector. And whereas Fountain Hills Dark Sky Discovery, I'm sorry, Fountain Hills Dark Sky Preservation Committee provides free education, resources, and solutions to the public to encourage the protection and enjoyment of dark skies and responsible outdoor lighting. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Jerry Friedel, on behalf of the town of Fountain Hills proclaim the week of April 21st through 28th, 2025, as International Dark Sky Week. And I ask each resident to join me in not only observing this important week, but also in raising the awareness and support for protecting our precious dark skies. In witness thereof, I've signed this, and it's got the town seal on it. So John, if you're here, come on up.
I think Vicki already pretty much explained what we're doing. Let me just reinforce and thank all of you in the town. The dark sky certification that we enjoy is the town's certification. Our organization is merely here to support, to educate, and to raise awareness. And it's because of what we have done that soon we are going to enjoy a very comprehensive discovery center, complete with telescope planetariums and many other things. So, thank you again. We look forward to continued support.
Okay, and now I see Justin lined up for a presentation. Rachel, do you want to?
Director Walde is going to be giving us a presentation tonight on the wash maintenance efforts that have gone on all spring and give us a forecast of what's coming next. Director, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Anyone that has had an opportunity to visit Fountain Hills and/or lives here can certainly recognize the founding father's commitment to preserving open space. There is an incredible amount of open space within the town limits. There are numerous locations in this community where you can walk right out your backyard into practically undisturbed natural environment. One could arguably say that after the towns incorporation and prior to the wash ordinance, that they attempted to put together some guidelines for maintenance and how that maintenance should be followed through with. Unfortunately, over the years, funding for that has been limited, to say the least. Over the past few years, we have certainly made some progress, and we have encouraging news for this year and good news for next year because the current council has approved funding that will allow us to keep going. Please note that we do not take wash maintenance lightly, and it can be challenging. And one of the challenges that we face more often than not is the amount of debris, washing machines, couches, bicycles, concrete, brick, block, and just everyday trash, along with tree trimmings, that have been dumped over walls or fences, or sometimes if a road crosses through a low-flow crossing, someone might stop there and shovel it out of the back of their truck into that wash. These types of things drive up the challenges we face and the costs that we face to ensure that we have a reliable natural resource that allows for the conveyance of storm water from the McDowell's through the town into the Verde River and eventually the Salt River. We're going to look at a few slides here related to some of the work that has been taking place since October of 2024, when the council approved the most recent contract. This is a map of our washes and all of our dams. This is obviously not a blown-up one, but for anyone that has had an opportunity to see this exhibit, you will see that there is an incredible amount of drainage that passes through this community. Please note that this is the town-wide and includes the unincorporated, now incorporated area of the state trust land. We do not do any maintenance in that area. And there are several areas that are privately owned or the responsibility of neighborhood property owners associations and/or homeowners associations or gated communities, and some of them are maintained by private landowners behind the gated communities. I've done already a considerable amount of talking, but imagine if you would that the town has a little bit over 200 acres of undisturbed land, for lack of a better description. In the second half of this year, we have managed to do maintenance on approximately, this slide is about five weeks old. We've made some progress, so we're up to about 55 acres that we have done. The ones that we're going to discuss tonight are clearly shown there, which is Powderhorn and Sirius Wash. Each one of those are south of Shea. As we get closer, we get into Haggen Wash, Jaclyn Wash, Malta Wash, and Ashbrook. Now, the area of Ashbrook that we're going to be discussing later in this presentation is primarily between Hampstead and Bayfield Drive. There is a little bit of additional work that's going to take place that's east of Bayfield, heading towards Saworo later on. This first video right here is basically a before and after of one of those washes that shows what it looked like prior to us getting there and the material removed. Keep in mind, for some of these areas, you'll see what appears to be a clear cut or everything removed. In fact, what we've done is we have just cleared the flow line, which is our primary objective here. Make sure that the flow line is clear and take any measures necessary in regards to fire mitigation. This is Powderhorn Wash. This is south of Shea, just off of Saworo. The photo on the left shows the wash prior to us being in there. Obviously, the one on the right shows the after. Here is another little section of Powderhorn Wash, the before and after. This is Oxford Wash. And we're showing you this section right here because this is the area where water is conveyed from numerous neighborhoods down the streets and into a couple of small drainage pipes, and then it enters into Oxford Wash and makes its way to the east. But we wanted to show you the before and after. As you can see, there's organic material and/or growth that's covering the inlet and/or completely covering the riprap that protects that inlet. This is an area of Ashbrook Wash. This is just east of Hampstead. You'll see on the left that there is a considerable amount of growth, and the one on the right is what we've been doing as we get started. I think it's important to note that the areas that we'll be working on later on this fall and into the spring are going to be primarily focused on Ashbrook Wash and a couple of others around the town center. There is an incredible amount of illegal dumping in Ashbrook Wash that's going to require, for lack of a better description, hundreds of thousands of dollars to remove. Some of it has built up for decades and could be anywhere from 20 to 30 feet wide and 150 feet long and contain tree branches, used or unused appliances, bicycles, brick block. The mayor and I have taken a few field trips out and taken a look at this material. We've taken pictures. We are working on an outreach and some educational material for the homeowners that not only back up to each of these washes, but the homeowners in Fountain Hills as a whole will put out a flyer. One of the things that we, we are focusing on here, and the town manager, and duly noted, was concerned about some of the things that I'm going to say. Whenever I say that we are going to stop wash maintenance during the warmer part of the months, and there's a considerable amount of pushback on that, the primary reason for that is safety. For those that are able to enjoy the wash on a regular basis, walking their dogs or maybe riding their bicycle on one of those areas, you can hear and see pretty much everything that's around you. When you get into the densely vegetated areas, and there are chainsaws and tractors and other stuff running, you cannot necessarily hear what's going on around you. And there are a considerable amount of snakes and other venomous creatures that live in and around the washes. When you have to reach down and pick up debris in and around shrubs, you certainly may not see, and you're not going to be able to hear, a rattlesnake. There are also during this time, the Sonoran breeding season, that, believe it or not, if you go down into these washes this time of year... that, believe it or not, if you go down into these washes this time of year, you'll see that they are very, very busy. We are in fact flying a drone on what I refer to as the hardest-working couple in Fountain Hills, some owls that are raising two owlets right now. We're monitoring them because they're living in a dead tree that needs to be removed for safety. But we are going to allow them to raise their family. And once they have flown and everything is all clear, which will probably be later this fall, we'll remove that tree. We're not going to describe the location of that tree or those creatures for obvious reasons. When we get back in here in the fall, there is going to be a considerable amount of work done. We will have a brand-new budget. We already have a plan put together. There are going to be substantial changes to several of the larger washes. I think it's important to note that wash maintenance does not include a clear cut of everything, and we routinely do not go up on the slopes or above the slope because the trees and shrubs and bushes that are growing there stabilize those slopes and minimize erosion in that area. We will, however, be removing any dead or drying brush that may or may not create any fire hazards to the best of our ability. We've got a couple of more slides here, and this one right here is a pretty important one. This is the defensible space. As we are working through all of these washes, we are keeping in mind that not all of the homes that back up to the wash have the clear 30 feet between the dwelling, the home they live in, and the wash. We will take that into consideration as we do maintenance there. As people contact us, and there's been a considerable amount of communication back and forth between the elected body, the town manager, myself, and other staff members related to wash maintenance, it is very, very difficult to explain to someone that the conditions in Fountain Hills are not similar to other areas in the U.S. where there are wildfires. Their concerns are legitimate. We have a fire department, and they are absolutely capable. And when we have questions in regards to fire safety, I do not answer them. I do not forward them to the town manager. We forward that information to the fire marshal and/or the fire chief. They are the experts, and they have the ability to answer those questions. I can tell you recently that they have visited numerous homes at the request of that homeowner and given them some guidance and/or provided guidance to town staff in regards to their observations. With that, in the interest of time, if you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Just a comment. I appreciate the fact that we've done some, a lot of onsite visits to see the scope and the size of this job. It's monstrous. So, and I appreciate the council's support in giving additional funding toward this project because it is serious, and we want the residents to know that we do take it seriously. Councilwoman Callie Vianakis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing for the public's sake. And one of the things, when I hear from constituents the most, is I have a very dangerous wash at my house, and I'd like to take priority. And numerous people say that. And so, just for the townsfolk, so we can just put this on the record tonight, what is the procedure, how we pick which washes, and what's the pecking order? So they kind of have an idea of the process. Because, understanding that everybody thinks that, you know, they want their wash done first, and we simply can't do that.
Mayor, Councilmember Callie Vianakis, we intentionally do not publish a schedule for where we are going to be and for how long because the conditions are really going to dictate that. I will tell you that every town-owned wash that was shown on the second slide of this presentation will receive some attention. Please bear in mind that we've only had a few months in adequate funding to get started, and we've made incredible progress. And arguably, wash maintenance has been behind for probably 25-plus years. We're going to need a couple of years to get caught up into a manageable condition, but we simply do not publish times or schedules because we don't want to be caught off-guard or, more importantly, if we're not there on Tuesday, have the mayor and council receive criticism.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Watts?
Justin, there's a wash that's Fountain Hills Boulevard in Sherwood. And I was looking on the map to try to find the name of that. Do you know what that name, what that name of that wash is?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Watts, I believe that's Legend Wash.
Legend. And it'll be done next year sometime? It's a disaster right now.
The intent is to try and accomplish everything in a two-year period. So we will do our best to get to it. If not, we'll get it in FY '27. But we're going to continue to work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, we'll move on to the call to the public. Town clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor, we have four cards. We'll start with Pam Cap, followed by Nancy Ordowski.
Good evening. Pam Cap, nine-year resident of Fountain Hills. For months, we have heard from the rock council members that DEI is bad. DEI gives an unfair advantage to those not worthy. Yet, it's no surprise that the rock majority will give themselves an unfair advantage that they are not worthy of. The plan is to erase all ethic violations that are on the record for past and present council members.
I'm sorry, that's an agenda item, not for the call to the public.
I could speak about anything at the call to the public.
Not an agenda item. I'm sorry. Next speaker, please.
Nancy Ordowski, followed by Shelby Bleeker.
Hello. My name is Nancy Ordowski. I've owned property here in Fountain Hills for 29 years and been a full-time resident for 27 years. I want to thank the mayor and the council for your voting on the care, excuse me, of the community center and the updates that you spoke of last, two weeks ago. I think it's vitally important that we do take care of our property and not let it deteriorate and make it such a huge expensive item. But I also have a concern with that. And the fact that in that meeting, except for Councilmember Skilicorn, nobody was concerned about how many bids you had for any of that project. It's vitally important, and I think that the council needs to make it a policy, that at least there be three bids on any project where any money is being spent. It was stated, well, we have the money in the fund to do this. That's great, but I'd rather see $100,000 saved than all of the funding spent. So please, whatever way or direction that you can take this in, I think it's really important. And it doesn't always have to be one group that does the entire job. There are people who install fans and lights. There are people who install blinds. There are people who install the doors and things for the community center to divide the rooms and things. So I think that you should take that into consideration. And please expect more than just one bid to make a decision about how the money is to be spent. Thank you.
Shelby Bleeker, and then the last speaker is Ed Stiza.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, town staff. My name is Shelby Blecker, resident for a little over a year now. I'm going to tell you a little story, and I promise I will tie this into Fountain Hills, so bear with me. A segment on 60 Minutes that ran on March 30th talked about the hazardous waste generated from the fires in Palisades and Altadena in L.A. County. The article talked about batteries from cars, cell phones, e-bikes, power walls, et cetera. But I'd like to speak about the EVs that they had found. 60 Minutes' segment talked about over 600 EVs that were found in Palisades alone, and just one car requires over six drums to dispose of the batteries from that car. So this is what happens. After these drums are plunged into a saltwater brine for three days to try to remove any energy from in them, the batteries have little or no product that can be recycled. The battery material is scooped out, shoveled onto a steel plate, and then it's steamrolled. Chris Myers from the EPA spoke to 60 Minutes and stated that there's not a lot of value still left in what they have there. Now it gets complicated. What's left is technically still hazardous material under California's strict environmental regulations. There are only two landfills in California that are certified to take hazardous materials, and they were pretty much out of capacity before the fires. So half of California's hazardous waste gets trucked out of state to Utah and to right here in Arizona. My question, my comment really, is why should we in Arizona take this hazardous waste from California? Just because we have lower federal EPA standards for hazardous waste in Arizona means we should allow our state to be polluted like this from California? I still need to drive often to and from Los Angeles, 406 miles one way. And when crossing into California, most of that drive is wide-open desert. Not even a single tree, a lake, or a river to be seen. California certainly has enough room to handle their own hazardous trash. Now, I'd like to ask you, the Fountain Hills Town Council, to take the lead on this and let our legislators know what's going on and that it's not okay to be the dumping ground for California. Please put this on your legislative calendar and discuss how we can stop this. Let's keep Arizona and Fountain Hills beautiful and clean. We should only need to deal with our own waste, not everyone and anyone else's trash. Thank you.
The last speaker is Ed Stiza.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, staff, and the public. Very disappointing that we removed the agenda items, nine D and E, from speaking about it tonight and going over it. But I'm actually here to talk about the shade structure that's about to be installed down on the Avenue of the Fountains within the median. I don't think that there's been a solid enough look at this, and certainly designs have not... They haven't been presented correctly to the public, certainly in a tremendous amount of detail. There's so many people I talked to that have absolutely no idea what this is. I think, and I'm actually pleading with this town council and to actually retake a look at this before you install this on the Avenue of the Fountains. This is actually something that I don't think it was presented correctly. And there are very few people that actually know the scope of what this design is going to do and at what cost. We are absolutely filling in our open spaces within Fountain Hills, and this is really going to do that. Let's leave the avenue open. And we just had talk about dark skies and presentation or proclamation. And, boy, we're going to cover up our dark skies even more again. And this shade structure is going to sit there for 90% of the time, empty. And it's going to block the views to the fountain. And I certainly understand the need for shade in this town and Arizona in general. But at what cost? Look at, please, look at some different designs before the installation happens at the end of June. It's coming quickly. And most of the public does not know about it. So I'm also pleading with the public to please, please, look at exactly what they are about to do on the Avenue of the Fountains. And please comment on it and write in to the town and let everybody know how you feel. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me make sure everybody understands that nine C and D were just separated, and we will hear a discussion on both of those agenda items tonight, Ed. So you're aware of that. Next, we'll move on to, is that it, Town Clerk? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our consent agenda items, which is just approving our minutes from the last meeting. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Watts?
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon?
Aye.
Councilmember Callie Vianakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Councilmember Skilicorn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Toth?
Aye.
And Mayor Friedel?
Aye.
Mayor 7-0.
Thank you. Our first regular agenda item is a consideration for possible action for the approval of a subcommittee recommendation to our Strategic Planning Advisory Commission to a partial term from April 1st, 2025, to April 30th, 2026. And with that, I'm going to move to appoint Polly Bonnet to a partial term from April 1st, 2025, to April 30th, 2026, to serve on our Strategic Planning Advisory Commission. Are there any comment cards on that? Okay, thank you. So I would need a second for that.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Councilmember Skilicorn?
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon?
Aye.
Councilmember Callie Vianakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Watts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Toth?
Aye.
And Mayor Friedel?
Aye.
Mayor 7-0.
Thank you. And then our next agenda item is consideration of possible action for a request to apply for congressionally-directed spending on behalf of the International Dark Sky Discovery Center. Rachel?
Thank you, Mayor. Our Economic Development Director, Amanda Jacobs, is going to take the lead. But I would like to kind of preface some of the statements that I think many of you know that our agenda this week, getting it out to, not only to the council but the public, was held up. This was the item that we've been working on. It kind of came in sort of at the 11th hour, so we wanted to make sure that we had done our due diligence and didn't put something out there without having proper review and whatnot. There's a lot to this. There's a lot of questions. I've had a number of questions from each of you, most of you. So please, make sure you have, if you have questions tonight, this is the time because there is a deadline for this, which is why we did have to put it on tonight's agenda. The application would be due 25th, I believe. So that is why there was a sense of urgency and the timeline associated. With that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Manager Goodwin. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I do not have a PowerPoint tonight. I'm going to give a brief overview, and then I'm going to talk about some motions. There's one in your packet, but I'm going to go over two. And through that motion, talk about next steps. So on March 26th, I met with Nancy and Joe Bill to talk about some upcoming grants. We've got the Fort McDowell, Republic Services, et cetera. During that meeting, they shared with me that Senators Gallego and Kelly had invited the dark sky to apply for fiscal year '26 congressionally-directed funding. The caveat this year was nonprofits could not submit on their own. They strongly encouraged, really it should be, it's strongly required, to go through a town. So here we are. On April 8th last week, so Tuesday after 3 o'clock, we were all here together at a workshop. And so we received some follow-up from Jeff Esposito informing us of the deadline, as Manager Goodwin mentioned, of April 25th. So I did ask, because I saw that it was just strongly suggested, is this really required? So they provided some backup information on April 9th. And so we're here before council. The request is for $2.5 million. It's to outfit a scientific exhibit, for example, for STEM education. So the council could tonight move to approve. And what that entails is you would be directing staff to complete that form. Then there is a waiting process. So it could be this time next year. It could be in September of 2026 that we may find out if we receive it. We will then have to, if we are considered, we then will have to complete a separate grant process. We would have to come before mayor and council for approval. But then the town staff would act as the grant administrator. To Manager Goodwin's point, if we take on that responsibility, just an estimate, it could take about 100 hours to process. So taking Manager Goodwin last week, the sort of scramble between several members of the finance team, my time, her time, the attorney's time, that was approximately 25 to 30 hours, combining our time. Because we can't just, sometimes people think we can just put this on an agenda. We have to do our due diligence, look at guidelines, make sure we're not violating the gift clause, et cetera. Also with... Also with this approval, if you approve it tonight, our finance director will have to increase the special revenue fund by approximately $3 million, just planning and anticipating if we are awarded. Now, that does not do anything to our expenditure limitation, because federal revenue funds are excluded. So don't let that shock you. Now, over the last couple of weeks, one of our councilmembers has gently said that sometimes she feels like I'm just presenting you an option to approve. So there's also the option to moving to deny. If you deny, that means all staff work stops, we don't complete anything, we don't get to submit the application. However, we will never know if we potentially receive those monies. With that said, I think I covered everything. Getting the nod from our CFO. I will open it up, Mr. Mayor, to any questions the council may have for staff.
Councilwoman McMahon.
Thank you very much. This is really an interesting grant. I have not seen anything like this before. And it's a lot of money, it's a lot of administration. I do have some financial questions, and I would like to know if this is approved and if council agrees with the management of it. Is there gonna be a legal agreement between Dark Sky and the town outlining everybody's responsibilities, releasing liability, et cetera? Is the staff, does the staff want to do this? Do they have enough time? Will a person need to be hired to manage this? Do you have any idea how much maintenance and administration it's gonna require, et cetera? What is it gonna cost the town? And I know it's a lot of questions, but I'm asking them at once so that we could, you guys, and why are we transferring $3 million? And what's the cost to the town, if anything, whether it's awarded or not awarded? Please.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember McMahon, I will tackle some of those and then defer it to our CFO. So your first question regarding a legal agreement, it's too premature to do that now, but that is something, if, again, we receive council approval, we do get awarded, where we would come back with the grant application, and then an agreement, it would include the legal aspect of it. And then, Councilmember McMahon puts us on the spot of, what does staff wanna do here? You know that I'm always honest with you. So, we're all extremely supportive of the Dark Skies. With what the manager described, we were in reaction mode, although we spent many hours looking at this. As the Economic Development Director, I, if it was just totally up to me, and it's not, it's a team, I most likely would say no. And just because I want to treat people fairly. So if the Chamber of Commerce came to us and asked us to do this with the U.S. Department of Commerce, would we do it? I don't know if we would. And then, last week, you guys know, we had our budget workshop. The next day, again, members of our finance team had to stop work on our budget to tackle this project. So if we received council direction, we will not have to hire new staff. Will we make it work between the Economic Development, the Finance Department, the manager's office? Absolutely. But we do wanna make sure, time is money, staff is money, so when we're working on this, and I'll just say, you guys know I administer many grants, there's lots of federal requirements, so it takes a lot of staff time and quiet time. You don't, you don't wanna mess up. You have another question? There's other questions I wanna...
Yeah, but getting back to your chamber comment, there's a caveat with this, that the senators will not accept the CDS project requests in which a nonprofit is the applicant.
Right.
And it basically is stating it has to be a government or town that supports this endeavor, and Dark Sky's in this case, in order to make the application, or it basically goes away. So I think that's a heavy consideration in approving or not approving, or staff wanting or not to do it, so to speak, and it kind of puts the staff on the spot, actually.
It was a little bit of a pickle.
I'll add to that real quick. So it will take time and effort on staff's part. We would be the administrator. Also, we'd basically be the grant recipient, and the Dark Sky Discovery Center would be the sub-recipient. So the money would pass through us, and we would be responsible for ensuring they're complying with the requirements. The nice thing about that is, with our direct costs, if we're spending time, we can get reimbursed from the federal government as part of this grant application process for that time. So there will be recovery of costs, but it will take time. I think that is a fact. And there's gonna be shared responsibility, which is outlined in the staff summary.
So, the Dark Sky Discovery Center in your agreement will be helping with the administration, or for lack of a better word, or be involved in some way, shape, or form, or that has yet to be determined based upon the grant parameters, right?
So, I can't say for sure, because this is the first step of this process. It's a request for funding, but typically with a federal grant, and it's a reimbursement basis. So, the Dark Sky Discovery Center would be responsible for purchasing appropriate, in this case, it's a STEM exhibit, so paying for an appropriate STEM exhibit expenditure. And we would be responsible for reviewing that and drawing down the money, taking the money from the federal government if it is approved, and ensuring that it's being dispersed to them appropriately as well. So we have the, we have the primary responsibility as a town in this case, in this type of situation.
Thank you.
Yes?
Councilmember, I just wanna add, so the full 100% administrative part of it will solely be on staff, for those checks and balances. But we would work in partnership with the Dark Sky Discovery Center, but they would not act as an administrator. And just again, just with my experience of our other grants that I have to administer, and a couple of years ago, through the ARPA funding, working with the feds and the state, the prime responsibility is on staff.
Councilman Watts.
Paul, you said an interesting word, reimbursed. That means that we get a front $3 million?
No, no, no. I'm sorry if that was what it sounded like. So Councilman Watts, or Mayor Councilman Watts, in this case, the Dark Sky Discovery Center would work through the town to request $2.5 million for the STEM exhibit. They would be paying for the direct costs of that, to putting together that exhibit, and they would simply be submitting the receipts and evidence that they paid for it, the invoices, to the town. We would use that to collect the money from the federal government, and so draw down the money. The money would go into our account for a short time period, and that's why we need to increase the budget to be able to make the payment or the reimbursement back to the Dark Sky Discovery Center. There's no cost to the town, other than the time and effort, also audit costs. We have to get a federal audit, which we, sometimes we do have to get or not. And we would be able to get reimbursed from the federal government for those direct costs.
So there's no intention of the Dark Sky Group to do anything with the STEM displays and interactive things that they've got, until they get the grant approved? So no money out of pocket until we get the grant approved?
We did have that discussion last week, to make it clear, because the federal requirements are very particular. Yeah, you have to wait until the grant is approved, awarded, and at that point, then you can start. There's, they call it a period of performance. It's usually a year or two years, where you have to carry out the objectives of what you stated in the application and what's allowable for the grant money. And as long as they do that, they follow the rules, we're the administrator of that, so we have to ensure they are doing that. And if not, we, unfortunately, we would not be able to submit reimbursement requests if they're not following the federal guidelines. So there could be some tough conversations with those types of things.
But again, it's a little confusing. When you say they have to do certain things and carry out certain functions, they need money to do that. Where are they gonna get the money to do that? Whatever those things are.
It would be the money the Dark Sky Discovery Center has in their coffers. They'd be spending that. The town would not pay for those exhibit costs upfront.
Okay. And from a liability standpoint, as the administrator, are we gonna be having somebody specific as a project manager so we can approve whatever is done and so on, or has that not been worked out yet? You?
Me and him.
And, and, and...
Yeah.
I'd get Justin involved, too. Justin's got a good background and...
He's got a lot of time on his hands.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Justin'd be a good one. But from a liability standpoint, we have, we gotta carry the load with whatever expertise we have in the house. Is that fair?
It is fair. Yeah, that's what it boils down to. I think for me, the question for you is if you believe it's in the best interest of the town to take on that time and effort that we will spend on it. And ultimately, the other thing I want to emphasize, it is the first step. I mean, this is just to request the funding be appropriated in the federal budget, and if it is, we still have to take several other steps before the money could be even approved.
Are we gonna have the opportunity to review the application prior to being submitted?
Yes, Councilman Watts, we would actually be the one submitting it. So we've already worked that out. If the council does approve this first request, they, the Dark Sky Discovery Center would prepare a grant application draft, and we would review it, make revisions as needed, and we would be the submitter of that request.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Earl?
You mentioned if they weren't compliant with something, and you, we are the ones, the town, I should say, are the ones that are gonna have to watch over them for that. And if they don't get in compliance, and we are, what would happen if they weren't? What would happen to the town then, and that money there?
So, Mayor, Councilwoman, that's a good question. So, we would both be subject to a federal audit, and we don't always get those. You have to spend over $1 million of federal funds to trigger that threshold, and you get a federal audit. And so, whatever they find, in this case, let's say the $2.5 million full amount is awarded. $2.5 million would go through the town, and we would be the, like, the gatekeeper, the key holder, for that money. Whenever the Dark Sky Discovery Center spends money, we have to make sure it's appropriate and within the confines of the grant agreement requirements. And so as long as we're doing that, and I will say that our accountant and myself, we have a lot of experience with audits and federal audits, so we're very familiar with the criteria. I wouldn't say the criteria is very difficult, but going back to liability, we would be responsible for findings from our perspective. The Dark Sky Discovery Center would also have to get a federal audit done on their own accord, and it, we wouldn't technically be responsible for their audits, but since the money's going through the town and we're sending the money to them, we would be responsible for those audits. So, let's say worst-case scenario, there is a big audit finding where it was inappropriate use of federal funds. We could have an audit finding, and the worst-case scenario is the feds could try to recover the monies directly from us and/or the Dark Sky Discovery Center.
And up to this point, what has the working relationship been between the town and the Discovery Center?
I'll let Amanda answer that. I haven't worked too much with them. I did recently work with one of the board members discussing this topic, but I'll let Amanda maybe touch on that. There you are.
And on the other side now, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Earl, I would say, good. One, I mean, we're here, right? And earlier, the conversations with the Night Sky Tourist, the proclamation week, it goes really well. With the Dark Sky Discovery Center, beginning last year, we have an internal project team, and if something comes up, so a couple of weeks ago, I was able to contact Jerry Butler and his contractors, and I said, hey, there's been some questions. Rather than separate meetings with our directors, which is inefficient, let's just get in a room, roll up the sleeves, answer the questions, make sure we're all on the same page. And so some of that is timely. So I would say it is good. You're welcome.
Let me just quickly add that it's a big responsibility and there is liability if there's something that's done wrong, but I trust our staff to oversee this, and we fully support the Dark Sky Discovery Center initiative. So, with that, Councilwoman Cali Vianakis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, yeah, what the mayor said is absolutely right. I think that there's a unanimity of the council and the mayor to wanting this money, because we all love the project, but it does come fraught with risk. It's funny, this comes up on Tax Day, because I've been dealing with the federal government for like a week, trying to figure out what I owe, and it's been really difficult. And I've gone to a few different people on what I owe, and they disagree. So dealing with the federal government is not, it's not to be taken lightly, and that's what they're, that's what they're asking us to do. Now, Councilwoman McMahon talked about contractually, can we obligate the Discovery Center to do what they're supposed to do and what we're supposed to do? Technically, you can, but we're gonna be the personal guarantor as the town. That's why they are not going to accept anything other than a town to back this up. If you look at the request, nonprofits wishing to participate in this program are strongly encouraged to partner with a public entity, such as local government, as project sponsor. That's because we are gonna be the personal guarantor. That's something that we can't take lightly. Now, there's also the issue of, we're gonna be spending funds, and again, let me go to the agenda package here. Direct costs, actual time worked, audit costs. The town would request, request the federal government for actual time spent providing grant administration services. So, we are gonna spend the money, and then we're gonna ask for it back. We're gonna petition, it says, for the money to be returned to us. I think, do I have a good read on that? Because we are gonna ask for the money that we spent, and then it's gonna be reviewed by the same government that's gonna review my tax return.
Mayor, Councilwoman, yes, so the grant is a reimbursement basis, and the direct costs that we've, there could be more that come up, we just really don't know. Like, for example, if we feel we cannot handle it as a staff, we could hire a consulting firm to do that and get reimbursed from the federal government. But yes, the town would outlay the monies first, and in this case, most of that has to do with the audit costs. And our audit, single audit is nominal, ours is $3,000 a year. And then, other than that, it would be, let's say, the accountant, the senior accountant and myself, we spent 15 hours in a month. We'd have to calculate our blended, you know, costs to the town, whether it's our payroll and our benefits, and we'd have to say, okay, we spent this 15 hours based on these rates, this is how much we could draw down. And technically, it's, once it's approved, that process is not that difficult, you're drawing it down. So in the staff report, we kind of explained the $2.5 million would be for the Discovery Center, and we'd put in $100,000 for the town, and so we'd have like a wiggle room to request those direct costs up to $100,000 if approved. It would likely be a lot less than that, depending on the amount of time we spent.
Again, just to clarify, as I read the document and the language, I don't think they're gonna give us that $100,000 as a slush fund, because the town will also work with the IDSDC to include another $100,000 in the request to account for direct costs. But once again, that's gonna be a request, so we are gonna be providing the money upfront, and then we will be requesting the money down the road. And that's what I'm a little concerned with, because if the federal government deems that we didn't do it right, our audit costs are too great, our attorney's overcharged us, whatever, then they will deny those expenses, including how many expenses were created by our town staff, which, after consulting with our town manager, might be substantial. And so, again, you know, I don't wanna be a wet blanket on this, but as we, as a body, deliberate this, this is a very difficult decision, because we are literally gonna partner up with a nonprofit, and we're gonna put our signature on the line. And so I just, I just want the people to know that no matter which way we go on this tonight, you know, this is not an easy decision. We are definitely earning our $400 this month.
Yeah, 100% valid considerations that you stated. The federal government is undergoing a lot of changes, obviously, and the guidance changes year to year. But typically, in my experience with federal grants, if they award you up to $100,000 for direct costs, typically you just, you're able to draw them down, but you have to provide documentation. So the way that's alleviated is through the audit. They look at what you submitted to the federal government, and if there's issues, they can write you a finding, which the federal government receives, and if there's significant issues, they can come after those monies. So typically, getting the money is not too hard, but if you make mistakes along the way, you can be held responsible for it at a later date.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Councilman Watts?
So Paul, if I looked at this a little bit different, if I had a construction loan, and I had a $2.5 million construction loan, I'd have a certain amount of money upfront, whether it was buying down points, whether it was just putting the business model together. And a quick back of the envelope says that your upfront costs are gonna be somewhere around $15,000 to maybe $20,000 in preparatory work in conjunction with the applications, which I don't have any issue with at all. My bigger concern is the liability and the application deadline of the 25th, not being, having the opportunity to look at the underlying documents. And the federal government is notorious for having gotchas in those underlying documents. That's my bigger concern. documents. That's my bigger concern. So, how do we overcome that on such a short timeline?
Councilman, I know our accountant did review. Did you review the form draft? So, he knows more about the detail. He can speak to that a little bit. Thank you for the question.
Mayor, Councilmember, part of it, go back to what Amanda said. What we're filing right now is just a request for the funding, and, yeah, there's not much documentation to it. It's just a form providing basic information. If that does actually make it into the appropriations bill and pass, then there's going to be a period of time between when that passes and before the federal agency opens up the grant, the actual grant application. At that point is where we're going to get all the documents that could have the gotchas in there that you're concerned about. So, that's when we're going to get them. That's when we're going to have to do the due diligence and make the decision like, okay, they wrote this into the congressional budget, but do we really want this? And that's where we will be back before council here, once we actually have those documents. We are not obligated to go forward with applying for that grant. It is possible that it gets written into the bill, and when we get to that point, decide, we don't want this. And so, that's why we will definitely be back before you, if it gets to that point where we have actually been able to review the documents that are going to be, you know, part of that grant agreement. So, but right now, we're not to that step, and those documents aren't even available to us.
Okay, so even the $15,000, $20,000 of staff time really won't be incurred. The application sounds like it's relatively simple at this point.
Yeah, well, and...
Just to get into the loop, the kind of the rotation for who may and may not apply.
Yeah, and part of it, too, like Paul spoke of period of compliance, or, sorry, period of performance. All of this upfront, pre, you know, what we're doing now, what we do to apply for the grant, none of that's reimbursable. That's outside the period of performance.
Right.
So, we're not going to get any of that money back. What we can charge as direct costs is within that period of performance, where we're actually monitoring the compliance of the Dark Sky Discovery Center. That's where we have the direct cost while we're in that period of performance that we can then charge. But, yeah, all the time we spent last week, what we'll spend to complete this request, once we, if it does get approved, all that time that we spend to do our due diligence on the documents for the grants, as well as just filling out the grant application, going through that process, none of that is stuff that we'll be able to charge to the grant.
I understand. I mean, that makes a lot of sense going forward on it. Anytime you have an application or a drawdown for a line of credit, you can have mobilization overhead and so on. So, we would fall into that category, along with whatever portion was completed that we're applying for. As long as we've got a kind of a get-out-of-jail-free card after the simpler application to get into the rotation, then I could be a supporter. So, thank you for the answer.
And just to close the loop for you, Councilman Watts, we did at least scan through the request form. On the surface, it seems pretty long. There are a lot of questions, but we have already discussed that with the Dark Sky Discovery Center. They're going to draft it all for us, and then we're going to revise it as necessary to alleviate some of that staff time, especially during budget season. So, we've taken some steps to alleviate that.
Councilwoman Skillicorn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The way I look at it, I just see the federal government uses the state to pass through funds all the time. This type of procedure is not new. This is not uncommon. It might be uncommon to us, but it's not uncommon for the people we're working with. So, I want to say thank you to Amanda, thank you to Rachel, thank you, Michael, thank you, Paul. This is the proper form of government. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second, but I think we need speaker cards.
Town clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor, we received two online cards. They were both four.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Can we give a roll call vote, please?
If I may, just before we vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I guess since we do have an out later, you know, that might affect my vote. But I just, again, I just want to reiterate that this project was sold to this town as not being a taxpayer-funded project. And with the 30 hours or so that we have in, and the hours that this town will have in the future, which we won't be reimbursed for, once again, I just want people to know that this is going to be partially a taxpayer-funded, because a lot of the funds did come from the state, and then now with the town doing in-kind donations with our town staff, you know, the taxpayers in Fountain Hills, if they support this, you know, are supporting it with their money, not just with their good intentions.
I'll just make a comment to that. I don't think I've heard from one person in this town that isn't supportive of this project.
Of course, not the project.
Yeah. So, anyway, so we have a motion and a, a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McMahon?
Aye.
Councilmember Skillicorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Councilmember Callie Vianakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Watts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Toth?
Aye.
And Mayor Friddell?
Aye.
Mayor 7-0.
Thank you. And Jeff, before you leave tonight, I have this for you. Maybe I'll just bring this down to you right now. Okay, so we'll move on now to item 9C, and that is consideration with possible action relating to resolution number 2025-15, approving updates to the town council rule of, rules of procedure amended and restated April 15, 2025. Rachel?
Mayor and council, this was, this item is a result of the discussion that we had at our recent work session. We had that maybe two weeks ago. There was quite a bit of discussion, over an hour actually, of discussion about the rules of procedure changes that were requested. We have taken those, that feedback. We've drafted an updated version for your review and potential adoption tonight. If the draft in front of you needs further work or further changes, we can take that direction and bring it back again. If it meets all of your expectations, it's open for adoption as well.
Town clerk, are there any comment cards?
Yes, Mayor, we have 14. We did receive 37 online, and they were all against approving it. We start with Diane Price, followed by Pam Cap.
Good evening, all. I'm Diane Price. I've been a resident of Fountain Hills for about 15 years. And first, I want to thank you for that really in-depth conversation you just had, and all the hard work that I know you put in to protecting our community. Why would anyone want to rid themselves of a code of ethics? Why would community leaders not want to be held accountable to the people they represent? I think the answer to that's really clear. A code of ethics is a set of principles that help people understand what is considered morally right, responsible, and acceptable behavior. It protects us, it protects you. Nearly every profession has a code of ethics that they abide by. But hey, we wouldn't want any of that here in Fountain Hills now, would we? Why are we considering this change now? Could it be because Mayor Jerry Friddell has told a little bit of a white lie when he took credit for gaining reduction in our town's MCSO costs? Could it be because it's okay for this group to harass and intimidate Fountain Hills residents? Why now? Because Alan Skillicorn intends to continue with his unwarranted attacks on the citizens of this town, if only to make a name for himself as he aspires to higher office? For those who may not be aware, I was one of Mr. Skillicorn's first targets. I wrote a letter to the editor that was somewhat critical of the new council people making decisions with very little information, and having to take those decisions and remake them and remake them, basically wasting our time and money. I wrote a letter that used the phrase "ready, fire, aim." That's a common phrase that people use when they're referring to some kind of haphazard sort of behavior. Well, Mr. Skillicorn thought that my letter to the editor was equal to brandishing a gun. He actually filed a criminal complaint against me with the MCSO. After he did that, a few days later, MCSO made it clear that this complaint was without warrant. Now, figure this one out. A month later, Mr. Skillicorn sent out a national press release with my name in it, fully knowing that this had already been considered without merit, his complaint. And he wrote in that press release with his flak from Illinois that Diane Price has taken to social media and letters to the Fountain Hills Times to use gun and threatening language in reference to Skillicorn. Now, I'm a 15-year grandmother resident. I never, a letter to the editor is not a gun, and it was rather ridiculous. He, I wanted to also say that there's a couple of things that he's been doing in terms of just covering his bases with social media. So, thank you. That's the end. I just want you to realize why a code of ethics is important.
Hello again. Pam Cap, nine-year resident. Let's try it again. For months, we have heard from the ROT council members that DEI is bad. DEI gives an unfair advantage to those not worthy, yet it's no surprise that the ROT majority will give themselves an unfair advantage that they are not worthy of. The plan is to erase all ethic violations that are on the record for past and present council members. The plan also includes removing the complaint process. This affects every resident and only benefits the council. Sound familiar? Skillicorn was and still is guilty of violating Fountain Hills ethics requirements, but this lets him off the hook. He and the council will willingly deny us, and that's everybody in this room, deny our First Amendment rights, which states, "We, the people, have the right to petition the government for a redress of grievances. You are the government." Without the complaint process, residents will lose this. Councilmember Skillicorn, Alan Skillicorn, is a politician who started his chaos campaign back in Illinois. While serving as an Illinois state representative, Skillicorn had an ethics violation and criminal fraud complaint filed against him. He was caught lying about being president in Springfield on June 1, 2019. Skillicorn claimed he was present on the floor of Springfield, voting on various bills, when he was actually 220 miles away, walking in a parade. He even posted photos on his own Facebook page. Skillicorn voted on 23 of the 26 bills. That is fraud in Illinois. Soon after, Skillicorn fled Illinois for Arizona. Before Councilmember Skillicorn was even elected, he was thrown out of town hall for causing a disruption over his illegally placed and unregistered PAC signs. Skillicorn broke Arizona law and the Fountain Hills sign ordinance, and that was just the beginning. On September 16, 2023, Skillicorn chased down our code enforcement officer. I'm sure we all saw the police video. During that incident, not only did Skillicorn break traffic laws, his ethics clause, he also lied to the Maricopa County Sheriff's Deputy seven times when he was asked if he was flashing the lights and honking the horn in an attempt to stop the code enforcement officer. After every excuse under his son, his answer was no, which was an absolute lie. Before, because of his actions and unprofessional behavior, Skillicorn was sanctioned and required a responsible adult to be with him when interacting with town staff. He has aggressively confronted department heads, accusing them of lying without evidence. He made veiled threats against town staff, placing them in fear. Don't take away our right. We have a right to address you.
Mayor Beth Culp, followed by Liz Gilderslie.
Good evening, Beth Culp, Fountain Hills resident for nine years now. I have to say that I'm very, very concerned that the town attorney is not in attendance here tonight, because I think that this town council is, has got very, very serious conflicts here. Four members of the council. Councilwoman Skillicorn, who's going to get a clean slate and have his past sort of magically wiped away. He shouldn't vote on this. If Section 10 is coming out in the magical thinking, and it is magical thinking, is that if Section 10 goes away, it retroactively applies to Skillicorn, and he is, can go forth and say, see, I told you, I was, there was a witch hunt, and now I've been vindicated. And for you, Mayor Friddell, you clearly have a conflict of interest. You know you do. There's a pending claim against you. It was referred to outside council by the town attorney, because he found my complaint to be facially valid. And Councilmember McMahon and Councilmember Callie Vianakis, you too have a conflict voting on this. There are pending claims against you. The town attorney does not have the power or the authority to place those on administrative hold, nor does he have the authority to dismiss them, consider them null and void. He found them all to be facially valid. They need to be taken forward to the end process before you can vote on eliminating Section 10. As to the other, you know, proposed revisions to the Ethics Code, I say you're throwing the baby out with the bathwater, and the baby is worth saving. You could have taken more time looking at these provisions, put some definition into the issues that are presented in it, as Councilmember Watts suggested. But throwing it all away under this situation, I mean, every meaty provision, throwing it away, the optics are terrible. They are terrible. The mayor has a very, very serious complaint in the, on the Fountain Hills Times. He made a misrepresentation. This is, this just looks bad, and the press is going to pick it up, and they're going to say, something stinks in Fountain Hills. Do the right thing. Put this aside now. Take some time. Look at the, put some meat into it that means something, but don't take away the people's rights, please.
Good evening, all. Liz Gilderslie, Fountain Hills resident. I do like the changes presented to the rules of procedure tonight, especially eliminating the current Ethics Code. The Ethics Code, unfortunately, has been weaponized against some and completely ignored by others on this council and previous councils. So, it seems a waste of taxpayer money, not to mention your time, the public's time, in expecting fairness and uniform application. Like, for example, just a couple of meetings ago, Councilmember McMahon and Councilmember Callie Vianakis disparaged fellow council members from the dais, along with members of the public, which is a direct violation of the current Ethics Code. I was one of those people who Callie Vianakis not only disparaged, but also spouted out wrong information as fact during a council meeting. Because of chamber decorum rules, neither I nor the other members of the audience, who were openly disparaged, were allowed to respond in the moment to correct Callie Vianakis, because Callie Vianakis did so cowardly from the dais. As I understand it, the two, or the ethics complaints against Callie Vianakis and McMahon are still pending, as you debate these rules of procedure tonight, or changes tonight, and I'm all for that. Frankly, though, I think most residents would rather you all spend your time taking care of substantive town issues, such as creating an ordinance for code enforcement sober home inspections, 5G, rigorous road repairs, and looking for ways to be better fiscally responsible and not grow the size of our town government, as been happening the last five years. These are just a handful of significant issues needing immediate attention. So, get rid of the Ethics Code and the noise. That's all it is. People will decide at the ballot box whether your behavior is acceptable or not, pure and simple. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, we have Barry Wolborsky and Kim Wolborsky.
I'm the Barry half of that.
I'm the Barry half of that. So, I'm going to talk not about Number 10. Sorry, guys. It's not exciting. I'm going to talk about Item 42B1, which conflicts with Item 42A. 42A says agenda items must be posted on Thursday prior to the meeting, but 42B1 says on Monday prior to the meeting. I don't think you can do both. I'm opposed to the change to make it back to Monday again, especially since now people have to get their written comments in by noon on Monday. So, what if you post something at 12:01 on a new agenda item, at 12:01 on Monday, nobody can comment on it, right? Is that what you want? Residents will have no chance to comment, because the deadline is already gone. This is not open government. My argument is the same for Item 44 regarding changes to the agenda items, that the changes should also be posted in a timely manner so residents could read them and respond. Item 52E2, public comment time limits. This change is the antithesis of democracy and the one-person, one-vote principle. It could lead to cronyism, which allows people who support the council, mayor, or the manager's position more time than those people who oppose it. It is the opposite of what each of you proposed as your goals in office when you ran for this office. You said that you wanted to make the mayor and the council more responsive to the voters. This ain't that. This is making you the decision of who gets to talk how long, and not everyone is equal. It kind of reminds me of George Orwell, and that some animals are more equal than others. This is the kind of thing that energizes your opposition, and the next election cycle is only a little over a year away. Please omit this rule from your changes. Let's keep this council responsive to the people.
Hello, and I'm Kim, half of the Wolborskys. Can you hear me through this crazy mask? I also want to speak about the time changes on this. Section 2.1... Oh, mayor, council. Section 2.1 proposes to change the content of the agenda may not be changed after 72 hours prior, and then it's going to change it to the Thursday prior. Now, this assumes that the meeting will always be on a Monday. It doesn't allow for holidays or special meetings. I think this should continue to be X hours, X days, or X business days. Section 4.2.B1 is the same issue. It says changes from two business days to Monday. Let's see. Item 5.2, under the agenda, same thing. It changes 48 hours to the Thursday prior to the meeting. And Section 6.682, same thing. It changes 48 hours to the Thursday prior to the meeting. Now, you guys may have a reason for that, but I don't understand it. The other thing is, on Section 4.3C, this proposes changing... Addenda change due date from 72 hours prior to the council meeting to 24 hours. I think this is fine for removing items, but I don't think it's good for adding items. It doesn't allow time for residents to review and research proposed changes, such as the 35-page document attached to this. It took me a couple hours to get through it, which I can't believe I did that. Clearly, I need more something else to do. Actually, I'm incredibly busy. I don't have that much extra time every day. For example, over the weekend, I was extremely busy, frantically getting my project ready for the recycled art project, and there's no way I was looking at this. So, thanks, everybody in the community center for putting that on. And then last, this Section, Item 52E2, which allowing for extra time during the call to the public. I'd like you to clarify this, if you can. I really, really have appreciated the short and more even-handed calls to the public that have been instituted lately, and I don't want to lose that. I understand there may be a use for waiving time limits to allow for clarification or to let someone finish a sentence, and if this is for that, can you please... Could you maybe specify an additional time limit, such as one to three minutes here? Again, I don't see need for it, and I think it's a slippery slope. I'm not clear on what is the purpose of allowing people to ask for extra time beforehand from the town manager. But I do want to say I really like the following section, where it says speakers may not: A) reserve a portion of their time for a later time, or B) transfer any portion of their time to another speaker. And so, out of this 35-page document, this is what I found to complain about. So, overall, I'm good. Thanks.
Mayor Cindy Couture, followed by Ryan Yari and Linda Sommo.
Mayor Friedel and council, I'm Cindy Couture, and I'm a longtime member of this town. When a candidate wins the position of council member, he or she begins to represent all of us in this town. You surrender a certain amount of liberty when you're sworn into this position. The people of this town expect all of you to represent us in person, as well as on social media, with respectful and ethical behavior. Currently, the people in this town are being heinously misrepresented on social media by some members of this council. I have just two hateful examples, and you'll excuse my words, but they were posted. A current council member posted the phrase, "Damn Jews." That person also posted the phrase, "Black lives don't matter." That is not an appropriate representation of our town. The ethics policy needs to remain intact. The possibility for sanctions when ethics are violated needs to remain intact. And someday, the tables may be turned, and you may need to file an ethics complaint to be heard. Thank you.
Mayor, council. My name is Renee Yarian, and I'm a long-term Fountain Hills member. A code of ethics is a professional conduct that outlines the principles that govern decisions and behaviors. A code of ethics is broad, giving employees or members a general idea of what types of behavior and decisions are acceptable and encouraging. The towns around us all have codes of ethics. Scottsdale has a code of ethical behavior. The city of Phoenix uses three different significant policies. The city of Mesa has a separate ethics handbook for elected officials, and they hold appointed boards and commissions accountable to those. The city of Peoria has a separate code of ethics handbook and a code of conduct. The prologue of the city of Surprise has the Policies and Procedures Manual is the Athenian Code, followed by written rules of conduct and demeanor, requiring the city of Surprise to uphold, promote, and demand the highest standards of ethics from all of its officials, whether elected or appointed. The Gilbert Town Council also has a formal code. The current Fountain Hills Code of Ethics contains Sections 8.1 through 8.10. This resolution that's proposed guts the last half of that. It completely eliminates the compliance and enforcement. And that's a vital part of an ethics policy. An ethics complaint is the only tool that citizens have to hold council members accountable for their decisions and actions. There are clear rules about how complaints are to be filed. The council is asking to completely eliminate that, and why is that? It's due to blatant violations. The sanctions that have already been filed and put in place should be honored and continued. The new complaints that were filed according to current rules should be investigated and treated accordingly. In fact, it seems totally unethical to erase the rules that erases the violations. Changing the rules after the fact does not change the fact that lying is wrong. Lying is always wrong. Holding people accountable for lying is a responsible action. Fountain Hills deserves no less than ethical and responsible behavior from all members of city government. Ethics matter. It is a violation of public trust to believe that merely erasing that part of the code makes unethical behavior acceptable. There's free training in ethics in city government available, and even required by some sittings. So, I believe that Fountain Hills needs to maintain their code of ethics and for sure to have the compliance and enforcement enforced.
Linda Sommo, followed by Ellen Magazine, and then Crystal Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mayor Friedel, council members. My name is Linda Sommo, and I've been a resident of Fountain Hills for seven years. The previous speaker made all the points I would make, so I could just say ditto and sit down. But, you know, why waste three minutes? So, I would like to say that trying... When I vote, one of the first things I look for in a candidate is ethical behavior. To say that our town will do away with the standard of ethics for this council is unbelievable to me. It's... I can't even fathom why you would consider doing that, other than trying to do away with certain ethical accusations that have been made recently or have been made in the past. As to Mr. Skilicorn, that has already been adjudicated. He was found guilty of misbehavior and unethical behavior. He was given sanctions. And to try and remove those after the fact, when it doesn't appear that he has learned it all from previous behavior and tried to change it in any way, is just ridiculous. Mayor Friedel, I will compliment you that when I wrote to you after seeing the article in the Fountain Hills Times, you responded very quickly to my email and told your side of the story. However, you kept saying in your emails that because of the meeting, or a direct result of the meeting, was to save the city of Fountain Hills money. Is an outright misrepresentation of the truth. I won't call it a lie, but it certainly wasn't accurate. You knew very specifically that that savings had been made previous to your meeting with MCSO, and that maybe you just found out about it at that time. But there's a cause-and-effect relationship. If you say something is the result of a meeting, that means that the meeting was the cause of the effect, and you know that it was not. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, Ellen Magazine. I want to look Mr. Skilicorn in the eye and say, "I'm a damn Jew." Let me go on from there. Citizens need a code of ethics that is precise and understandable. This one absolutely is not. And citizens badly need a redress of grievances. Otherwise, it's going to be absolutely free range here to say anything you want. Let me give you... Fixing the existing code, in my view, is a waste of time, since it's so vague as to be meaningless and misunderstood. Here's a few examples. Mutual respect and trust. Some of you would likely be in violation, in my opinion. How does one define mutual respect and trust? Maintain public confidence in town government. How does one go about doing that? Shall conduct our official and personal affairs in such a manner as to give clear impression that we cannot be improperly influenced in the performance of our official duties. How does one do that? What would a suspected violation look like? Refrain from making disparaging remarks about other members of the council, staff, et cetera. How does one determine what is a disparaging remark? Many of the parts of the code are just open to interpretation, and I don't think the citizens should put any faith in this code of ethics, and I would urge you to write a new one. Thank you.
Good evening. I am in support of clarifying our town code procedures and removing Section 10. My initial reaction to Section 10 ethics revisions was that it seemed pretty self-serving. In full disclosure, I had an ethics complaint filed against both Calaviannakis and McMahon that was in the active investigation stage and nearly completed. But after further consideration, I fully support just getting rid of Section 10, which would also wipe out pending complaints, active investigations, future complaints, as well as current sanctions, hopefully. Our ethics process was often not carried out fairly anyway, in my opinion. Our code that defines conduct uses pretty broad terms. But part of the community's frustrations have involved those ethics complaints that have been filed in good faith, that were not nitpicky, and had clear justifications per our code. These were routinely sent out to handpick costly outside attorneys, taking longer than necessary with billable hours, only to usually come back unfounded and sometimes rationalized with semantics or word games, such as, "She requested that staff remove it. She didn't direct staff to remove it." Then, there have been other decisions, such as Skilicorn's, that have addressed perceived trumped-up threats towards code enforcement or allegations of fear-filled staff that seem almost to have had a predetermined outcome. And even when proof was uncovered that a question to fellow council members was indeed legitimate, sanctions harsher than ever issued before were still applied and remain in effect even now. A simple apology from Skilicorn would have been sufficient, just as it had been requested from former Councilman Ellen Magazine after his second episode of founded ethics violations. I'm very supportive of clarifying any town code procedures that are hazy. I also strongly support removal of Section 10 regarding ethics complaints. And let's hope any resulting frivolous lawsuits get tossed swiftly. Then, we just let the chips fall where they may. We can all embrace and celebrate free speech. Of course, proper decorum from the dais would be a welcome bonus, but if you'd rather show us otherwise, go for it. The public can make their own judgments about what is or isn't acceptable behavior. Thank you.
Mayor, our last two speakers have marked "may speak," so Elijah Norton.
Well, I was speaking about the next resolution, but can I go ahead and do it now?
Dee? Okay. I'll move you there.
Okay.
That's the end of the speakers.
Actually, you know what? I'll just speak about this, because it kind of goes into what I was saying, if that's okay. Sorry. My name is Elijah Norton. I'm the former treasurer of the Arizona Republican Party. Here on behalf of myself, I just want to say that people have the ability to make their decisions at the ballot box, and we should not be stripping elected representatives who were elected by the thousands of people in any town in this state of their abilities to serve, or diminishing their abilities to serve once they're elected. And that's, in my opinion, what happened, and I think that we should allow our citizens to make their decisions for who represents them at the ballot box. That's why I'm here today. So, thank you.
Town clerk? That's it? Vice mayor?
I feel as though there's been a slight misunderstanding, so for the sake of clarification, we still have our ethics code. And should there be egregious issues, our recommendation, as discussed at a previous meeting, would be you can complain to the ombudsman, which is the purpose of that office. You can recall a person on this council, or you can make that decision at the next election on the ballot box. Personally, I feel as though this horse was fairly thoroughly beaten at the last meeting, so I would like to motion to approve.
I second that. Could we please have discussion?
Councilwoman?
There have been allegations, and we... A complex of interests. Our town attorney is not here to legally advise on that and advise on withdrawal or the status. And so, I'm wondering if... And it's not particularly stated. And it's not particularly stated on this that they would be erased on this document and in the motion. So, I'm wondering if we should bifurcate Section 10, deal with all the rest of the changes, and then, when Aaron's here, address Section 10.
Councilman Earl?
Oh, sorry.
No, okay.
Because I'm concerned because of this complaint against four of us, and I want to make sure that it's not a conflict of interest to address this.
Councilwoman?
Yeah, thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have some mundane points that I'd like to discuss before we just vote on 10, because we still have many other items in this topic, changes to the code that I would like to discuss just briefly. But it was... Since we're going to do C and D separately, it was my understanding that the Skilicorn sanctions would not be relieved with a yes vote to option one, but they would be litigated or talked about separately. Is that your understanding, Mr. Mayor? Okay, yeah, so tonight, whether we do vote for option number one or we do vote for option number two, it'll still go... The Allen-Skilicorn sanctions will still be an agendized item to be discussed separately. And so, whether we eliminate Section 10 in its entirety or if we just direct the town attorney to come back with a better code, that's still what we're just talking about right now. And so, I hope this doesn't get too superheated, like it seems to have been, because we're just working on what many of the council members perceived as possibly serial offenders for filing ethics complaints, that maybe some of which weren't done legitimately, but to do damage to one side or the other. And so, I think all of us, with the work session, kind of agree that we were to tamp that down. We wanted to change the way we're doing it. And so, that's where we are today. As far as the things that I did want to talk about, it was, you know, Section 2.7 to remove newspaper notifications. You know, I think that I would still like to do newspaper notifications to the public on items that goes before the town and not just do it digitally. Section 4.2, it says an agendized item that is put on the agenda by three council members has to be put on the agenda within three meetings. I have no problem with that. But if the town manager runs into circumstances that it's not ready, it's not ripe, it's not ready to go, I think that the three-meeting rule should be... She could put a memo out saying, "We are going to have to do this at a later date because we are not prepared to put this on the agenda to the council. It's just not ripe yet." And so, I'd just like to, as slight amendment, to say the direction is to put it within the next three meetings, unless that is impossible to be deemed by the town manager, and then we will... She can issue a memo why it's not possible. So, that's the other thing. And then, the last thing is, as far as the call to the public, we're changing that from three minutes to three minutes, except for if the council, the mayor, the manager, or the attorney want to give the call to the public people more time. I'm a little uncomfortable with that because even though we are supposed to have nonpartisan elections and be nonpartisan in this council, it's proven pretty clear that there is a lot of partisanship going on. And so, you know, when one party is perceived to take over, they'll let their speakers speak longer when the other party speaks. So, I think the fair rule, the way that everybody knows it's being treated fairly, is to take the discretion away from the council and the mayor and the town attorney, and again, give that to the town manager. We have an important speaker. They are requesting more time. Could you be the arbiter of that? So, that we leave the politicians and people that are perceived to be partisan out of the decision-making process and have a neutral person say, "Yeah, this is an important issue. Let's give them seven minutes instead of three." So, those are the modifications I'd like to make.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My direction actually is for the town manager. Would you mind talking about the posting requirements that was mentioned in public comment? And just give us a rundown, because I have feeling that we discussed this pretty thoroughly, but want to give your intention, so it's part of the debate.
I can do that. Hang on one second while I find that section. Because I have the...
One of them was 4.3C. There was 2.1. I didn't write down the letter.
Hang on one second.
And then, there was the amendments was at 5.2E, but there's a specific reason for why we have that timing.
Correct. That one I'm more familiar with, just because it is consistent with what we've had in the past. The first 22 is 4.3C. As it's written, amendments posted agenda may be amended up to 24 hours prior to the meeting. In exceptional circumstance, an agenda may be amended up to, but not less than 24 hours prior to the meeting, unless otherwise authorized by state law.
And there's another question about the Thursday versus Monday.
Correct. In general, we have moved... Previously, in our rules of procedure, it was noted that deadlines were on... Were 24 hours before a Thursday. Thursdays used to be our meeting nights. If you were a longtime participant of our council meetings, council meetings used to be on Thursdays. Obviously, they are now on Tuesdays. The rules of procedure just didn't reflect that change of meeting day. So, that is where why that has been moved. The 24-hour rule is consistent with what state statute requires. And so, we just kind of... We stuck with that to be consistent. If that wants... If you... If there's a request to change there, we can certainly do that. But it was designed to be consistent with state. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to call the previous question.
Second.
We have to vote on that question. The question's been called. So, we need a roll call vote on that, please.
Is that voting on what, Brenda?
No, the question's been called to stop discussion, and then we go back to the original motion.
Councilmember Calvianakis?
Well, I would obviously be against ending debate. This... Every town council meeting, we have this coming up.
We're asking for a vote, not discussion.
We're talking about being weaponized. This is being weaponized because we are here to debate these issues. I asked for three minor amendments that would make this section...
We'll get to that.
We're not going to get to it.
Yeah, we will.
Because we're going to end debate.
We'll ask for an amendment to the motion.
Does that prevent...
Nay.
Councilmember Skilicorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon?
No.
Councilmember Watts?
No.
Vice Mayor Toth?
Aye.
And Mayor Friddell?
Aye.
Mayor 4.3.
Can we continue with discussion?
No, we can't.
Yes, we can.
Well, yeah, on the original motion.
It's not a debate. It's a... I want to discuss, but I want added into this.
Yeah, you're right, okay. Councilwoman?
Thank you. I appreciate it. I have a question about 1.6 and changing it. Rachel, can you explain the difference? Is there any difference in that, in the calculation? Or what does it do to those who have been served? Or, I mean, I'm trying to understand why the change, please.
This has to do with the vice mayor rotation.
Yes.
So, this is consistent with how we have applied the vice mayor. The vice mayor serves in eight-month increments. It rotates, and it's based on the number of votes...
Okay, thank you.
Received. So, this just clarifies that if you were voted outright in the primary, you take priority over anybody that came in via the general, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. In addition, on 6.6, casting a vote, it says if there's a conflict of interest, the town clerk shall include a statement as abstaining due to declaration of conflict, and the council member shall file a conflict of interest form. The Attorney General's rules and the state statute goes on to say that you make your substantial interest known, and then, for the member of the council, this can be done by either declaring at a council meeting that a conflict exists and having declared officially in the minutes, filing a written declaration with the town clerk, and/or making the declaration, asking that the minutes be copied and use that as the claim, versus making a separate claim, writing up a separate claim. So, I would like the... That section to coincide with the Arizona statutes and the Attorney General statute to be more thorough and clear and have it be and/or. And also, I would like to keep in Section 8. I think that it's still the code of ethics. I thought when we were talking in the work session about these amendments, that we would keep Section 8 in our code of ethics. So, I would like the motion to include a more thorough conflict of interest in concert with the Attorney General and the Arizona statutes, and also to include our code of... All of Section 8, 8.1, 8.2, et cetera, in our code of ethics, so that we have a code of ethics.
I believe Section 8 was just being amended, not eliminated.
Well, there's a lot of things that are crossed out of it that I don't want to see crossed out of it. I think that they're necessary. I think that they provide guidelines for us. And I, again, when we were talking about this in work session, it was my understanding that this would... The whole section would remain intact. I don't recall any discussion going through these individually. I think that without these, that we don't really have a code of ethics or necessary guidelines for us to follow for us to have a reference point to, as the town attorney said as well. And I believe it was his understanding that all of these were staying in, too. He said when I asked him...
Well, given that he approved this agenda item, he knows exactly what the draft presented before us tonight is. It's consistent with what was provided during that discussion based on Vice Mayor Toth's draft. And it was discussed there. It's really a council decision of whether we take it out or we leave it. I will say during that discussion, the majority gave the indication that they wanted it removed. It doesn't have to be. It's so open for discussion. That's why we're here tonight.
I don't want it removed. I would like it to remain in. I think that it is a good reference point for us and guideline. It's a good reference point and guideline for our public. And in fact, we have heard them state that they don't want this section omitted. And I think that it's important that it stays in. I don't think there's any harm in it. Again, I think it provides us with guidance and a touchdown for our conduct and understanding how we conduct in accordance with our oath of office, and provides more depth and clarity. So, I would like the motion to include all of this section in the red lines, add them back in.
Councilman Watts?
I think that there were... A lot of the speakers had a lot of good points, that some inconsistencies in the document itself that we should look at again. I also think that we did not provide enough information as to your alternates, as opposed to what is in Section 10. You can go to the state ombudsman. You can go to the Attorney General. You can recall. You can sue the town. So, you should promote... You should at least offer options. If you're going to eliminate one way to do something, you should give an option to do the other way. I think that in lieu of doing that, I think that we ought to give it back to council, not our council, but our attorney, and include more definitive descriptive definitions, as well as specific violations and specific punishments for those violations, as opposed to the ambiguity that we've got now. When we get to the next issue, the ambiguity is what drives me crazy. There are so many things that occurred that were... They weren't worthy of the punishment that was received. And I think that goes to the lack of definition as to what the violation or the infraction was, so it'd go to that. So, I think we're missing definitions. I think that we're missing making sure that we've provided options. And I think we ought to look at it in more detail and review in consideration of the comments that were made by the public as well.
Councilwoman Earl?
I just want to clarify. I thought we had a motion, and it was seconded to approve as is, correct? And then, we had a call to the question. Doesn't that end?
That was voted down.
Oh, we did not vouch. Okay. Can I call the question again? Can we vote now, please? Second.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I seconded the call to the question.
And what I'd just like to do is, in lieu of what Councilmember Watts just stated, and we do need clarification when we vote for this on option one or option two, I would like to file an amendment to the main motion to amend to my three minor upgrades to the rest of the code and to put option two on my amended motion, which would mean sending it back to the town attorney to clear it up, give it some meat on the bones, to avoid the problem of harassing complaints, but to do something that people out there still want to be able to file complaints against the mayor and council if we merit it. And so, my motion to amend would be my three amendments plus option two. And can I get a second?
Second.
Can I get a third?
And I have a clarification, too.
We have not dealt with the original motion and second that are on the table right now.
I have an amendment, too, what I previously stated as well, with including all of Section 8. I make a motion to amend the motion and include all of Section 8, our code of ethics. And I still haven't had my question answered about a conflict of interest.
You can't second the second? It's already been the amendment. We have to vote on the amendment.
I'm making a different amendment. I'm adding an amendment.
You can't layer amendments. You have to vote on the one.
Oh, okay. Well, okay. Let's vote on yours. I wish the town attorney was here to provide guidance. Pardon me?
Vice mayor?
I assume we'll be voting on the motion to amend shortly, so I'll keep this short. I... Excuse me, please. I have a question, if I'm allowed to ask through the mayor to Councilmember Calvianakis. I know that's not standard. Is that okay? My question is, would that therefore continue the pending complaints? Given that that was the previous discussion, if we do keep 10 in and whatnot, would we therefore be calling back that attorney and continuing the investigations? Is that your understanding?
Yeah, that's a very relevant question, and thank you for asking it, Hannah, because the pending complaints have been dismissed. Had they not been dismissed, then this council would all be conflicted: Councilmember Skilicorn, the mayor, myself, and Peggy, Councilmember McMahon. The only reason we are allowed to vote on this, and this was discussed prior to this meeting at length, is the only reason we can vote on this, because otherwise, we would have literally had to file a motion to table to a point that we would have a quorum. Because with four people not being able to vote, we wouldn't have a quorum. And so, I did talk to the town manager. I talked to the town attorney. He did call Sarah, the ethics complaint attorney, and told her that they were... He did call Sarah, the ethics complaint attorney, and told her that they were dropping all the complaints. Send us the bill.
So just to, sorry, but super duper clarify, although they have been stopped, should we approve these amendments tonight, would we be calling that attorney back to continue? Yes or no?
No, they've been dismissed with prejudice.
Understood. In that case, I'm against any amendments.
I got one more question. Town clerk, can you weigh in on these proposed amendments?
Mayor, you should vote on each amendment by themselves. They stand alone.
That's what I thought. Thank you. I wanted clarification.
So just so I can clarify, there was a motion on the table and seconded. Then Councilmember Calviannakis made an amended motion, and I believe it was seconded. Is that correct? So that takes the priority. That's the one you need to vote on first. And then depending on how that goes, take the next steps.
Roll call, please.
So this is the amendment made by Councilmember Calviannakis. Councilmember Earl?
Nay.
Councilmember Skilicorn?
No.
Councilmember McMahon? Councilmember Calviannakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Watts?
I still have a question. Was the, were the infractions paused or stopped? The last I heard, they were paused. They stopped completely.
Vice Mayor Toth?
Nay.
And Mayor Friedel?
Nay.
Mayor, the nays have it, five to two.
Now we have to vote on the Second Amendment, which was...
No, the actual motion.
Oh, the actual motion.
No, I made a motion to amend, to include all of Section 8.
Section 8.
And the Section 6.6 about voting and including the alternative way to file a conflict of interest statement.
Okay.
Just use the record.
Was there a second for that?
I did not hear one. Did someone second?
Motion, no second. Now we go back to the original motion. We have a motion and a second.
Again, if I can just make a point of order, I'm not sure if we're voting for Option 1 or Option 2. That's got to be made clear.
Vice Mayor, do you want to weigh in on that? Option 1 or 2?
Yes, I'm scrolling up. I apologize. Sorry. My motion was to approve, okay, yeah, let me go to page 62 to make sure I'm speaking correctly. Approve eliminating Section 10 of the council rules of procedure. Is that what Option 1 is? Yes. And then the other corrections as shown in our packet, the other redlined items. Correct. Okay. Option 1.
If I may, if I can restate, if you want me to restate Option 1, that's okay. Let's move to adopt resolution number 2025-15, approving updates to the town council rules of procedures amended and restated April 15, 2025, and to approve the elimination of Section 10 in its entirety with the effect of eliminating the complaint procedure for alleged violations of the Code of Ethics.
I confirm my second.
Roll call, please, Town Clerk.
Councilmember Watts?
We do an Option 1 or an Option 2?
Option 1.
It is Option 1. Sorry, I get lost here. I still think we need definitions and more discussion, but aye.
Councilmember Calviannakis? Councilmember Skilicorn?
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon?
Nay.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Toth?
Aye.
And Mayor Friedel?
Aye.
Mayor, five zero. Oops, sorry. Yeah, five two, I'm sorry.
Okay. Agenda item D, consideration of possible action, review and remove the sanctions previously imposed on Councilmember Alan Skilicorn.
I make a motion to accept that.
Second.
I'd like discussion, please.
Hold it. Are there any comment cards, Town Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. We received 23 online, all against. And then we've received six speaker cards. First speaker is Diane Price, followed by Beth Culp.
Thank you. Diane Price, again, Fountain Hills resident for 15 years. This has been really a clown show. I mean, honestly, you lost all of us. We don't know where you're going with this. Where's the attorney? Is there no longer a complaint procedure? I didn't finish what I talked about in 9C, so I will finish that. There was a time when I went ahead and communicated directly with Councilman Skilicorn. He never, ever gave me the courtesy of responding personally. I know that Councilmember Calviannakis and McMahon are always open to talking to people that might have disparate points of view, respectfully, not filing a criminal complaint against somebody who wrote a letter to the editor. So he does hide behind his social media. I wanted to mention that this was going to be my closure for me of this whole horrible situation that he put me in. He defamed me. He defamed my business. And he defamed me nationally. It's created tremendous trauma in my life as a citizen of Fountain Hills. Who cares about Fountain Hills? That's why I'm here. I want you to know that this is closure, but he does respond on social media. One of the things I want to share with you is, one of the things he posted is, "I don't want unity." Not on the establishment terms. "I want to beat them and humble them, and then I want them to kiss my ring." Does that sound familiar? Sounds familiar to me. He also wrote another pejorative statement on social media. "Someone needs to introduce these transvestites and fags to an AR-15."
Mr. Mayor, can you stop her from saying blatant lies of social media posts? She very well may create it.
No, these are not lies, and I did not create them. Why didn't you not answer me?
Point of order, this is violation of our public's comment rules?
No, it's not.
This is a personal attack.
You personally attacked me, and you deserve this. So I'm going to finish. I filed a complaint, an ethics complaint, and even though it was extraordinarily valid, it was dismissed. Not, my complaint was unfounded. Alan won. He won this one. But he did not and should not escape the sanctions that he received when he intimidated town employees. Their jobs are hard enough without having to deal with unnecessarily contrary behavior of unproductive councilpersons. When this group votes to relieve themselves of ethical principles, the accepted mode of behavior will continue to be ready, fire, aim.
Beth Culp, followed by Linda Somo.
Good evening. We had a petition drive. We had a written petition and we had an online petition. And I'm here tonight to present you with signatures of a little over 300 Fountain Hills residents. Some are on the handwritten and some are on the online petition. And here's what they were asked to sign. "To the mayor and members of the town council of Fountain Hills, please be advised that the undersigned residents of Fountain Hills oppose removing the sanctions imposed on Alan Skilicorn for his unethical conduct that included assaulting and defaming a town code enforcement officer, falsely accusing fellow town council members of corruption, and bullying staff." And attached to that is a very well-known photograph of Councilman Skilicorn with Mr. Lucchese. When he's got, Mr. Lucchese looks like he's got his hands up, he's surrendering himself to Skilicorn. And Skilicorn wrote, "This video is why Fountain Hills changed its unconstitutional sign ordinance." And at the bottom of it, he says, "Skilicorn versus sign thief." This is after the facts. He is so unapologetic and so brazen in his cruelty and his meanness that the idea of removing the sanctions that were imposed against him, this is not silliness. Councilmember Watts, you talked about the silliness. This is a member of our public body, our public official, who chased down a town code enforcement officer and then did not, was not straightforward with the deputy. And then later, he continues to taunt the town employee online. And he's taunted me many times, many times. He is responsible, many of us understand that he is responsible for creating false profiles, hacking people's media, creating false websites. He is a destructive man who likes to think about himself as an agent of chaos, and he's brought chaos to our community. And I ask you, please, change the sanctions, modify the sanctions, but he's going to go out and he's going to say, "I won, I won." And he's going to gloat, and it will be bad for all of us. Please think really hard about this.
Linda Somo...
I meant to turn this into the Town Clerk. These are the petition signatures. I apologize. Thank you.
Linda Somo, followed by Ed Stizza?
She had to leave.
Okay. Ed Stizza, and then there's Elijah Norton. He left? We have one speaker left.
Good evening, Ed Stizza, resident Fountain Hills. What do you say to that mass? Boy, I'll tell you. You know, when this happened to Alan Skilicorn, and I'll say happened to Alan Skilicorn, four, three town council members, and two are still sitting up there right now, and our previous mayor, went after and publicly castrated Alan Skilicorn. So I think that everything that was said that day was unnecessarily said to the public. So this stuff should be handled behind closed doors. I mean, that's all there is to it. And to bring this out into the public, to let bodies like this sit here and just make it worse, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. You know, so seems to be a little backwards here. And certainly, the sanctions should be released. I think people are making a much bigger deal about it. And I don't see where, you know, just piling on consistently does any good whatsoever. And you guys are starting to spin around the whole problem. You don't even see it. So maybe should correct all of it, and so should the public. You know, our town, you know, it is looking pretty dire as far as the public attitude. And it's too bad. I'm so glad I only really don't focus on politics, but focus on the aesthetics of the town. And it's too bad we don't all do the same. So try to get it all solved without making a public disaster of everything. So I'm done, but I don't know if Peggy wants to say something. So. Thank you.
Town Clerk, any more speakers?
That's the last speaker.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Toth?
Councilwoman McMahon was ahead of me, if that's okay.
Thank you very much. I don't really appreciate the most recent comments, having been on council for four years and experienced Councilmember Skilicorn and his bad acts. And to me, it's an honor to be elected as a member of the Fountain Hills Town Council. I've done my best to uphold that oath of office and the standards of ethical conduct that come with serving this important role. And I believe most of us here have strived to do the same throughout our time in office and be accountable. Unfortunately, I honestly cannot say that, first Councilmember Skilicorn, who proudly refers to himself as the agent of chaos. In my opinion, this does not reflect honorable conduct nor respect for the office to which he was elected. A year ago, he was lawfully sanctioned for egregious behavior and clear disrespect for the responsibilities of his position. An ethics complaint was filed.
Point of order.
An outside legal counsel determined he had violated...
Point of order. Excuse me. Is this a time for her to be attacking Alan?
Yes, I have a right to comment and talk about this.
I thought we weren't going to be disparaging against each other up here.
I'm not disparaging. Thank you.
I'd like to call the question because this conversation will only devolve...
Excuse me, please don't do that. I'm in the middle of making a comment and talking about it, and that's extremely rude, and that is a misuse.
May I get a second?
Thank you. Me? Wait, I'm in the middle of making a comment and I've been rudely interrupted.
I don't think we need to have disparaging remarks made on the dais about another council member.
They're not disparaging, please. Jerry?
Finish your, finish your talk.
I'm going to finish it. Thank you. You know, the fact of the matter is, is that ethics complaint was filed and he was found in violation of that. Just, you know, on the basic standard of ethical behavior, she found that he had violated it. I mean, he literally ran one of our staff and code officers off the road. And he's an ex-police officer, he feared for his life, and he ended up at Town Hall. And I'm being brief about it. And I mean, this was for a couple miles. He, the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office happened to be there, and it is on video. And this isn't trumped up. You can see it on video. And this isn't an isolated event. And I wish it wasn't. I mean, I wish it was, if that's all we were talking about, conduct. He was lawfully removed from the office, the Town Hall, for yelling at and demanding one of his signs that was legally taken. And due to the... Yes, it was. And instead of reflecting on these actions, he continues his bad conduct. He, in fact, he filed a federal lawsuit against me, the mayor, Calviannakis, and Sharon, because we lawfully followed the outside attorney and found him in violation and issued lawful sanctions reasonable for the rest of his term. He cost the town tens of thousands of dollars in that lawsuit, and the judge found that his lawsuit was frivolous and found against him. I mean, to me, knowingly filing a lawsuit based on a claim of violation of free speech and knowing that really has no merit, I couldn't believe that he did it. His social media posts have stated, his numerous letters to the editor, he intentionally obstructs committee appointments. I know he did that. He misuses procedural motions, in my opinion. You guys have stood before council and repeatedly complained about his actions, and I think that he has no remorse. He hasn't changed anything. He's been asked to change his conduct, but he doesn't. And therefore, I am, and I cannot in good conscience change my vote to sanction him tonight. I don't believe that he has changed his conduct, his attitude, or his disrespect to the office as demonstrated again by his conduct. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes. As I said... As I said earlier, I believe this conversation is obviously devolving into personal attacks and not staying germane to what the sanctions were actually on, which did not include his social media, did not include the lawsuit. I'm going to avoid droning on. I'd like to call the question.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just address this council...
Gail had already seconded, sorry.
Just very briefly, and I promise there'll be no disparaging attacks.
We don't discuss call the questions.
We have to vote on the call of the question.
Then, I once again assert my claim that the calling to the question is being weaponized. I'm the one who filed the complaint, and I don't even have a chance to just weigh in on the sanctions?
Your...
That's got to smack against just fundamental unfairness, Jerry.
Your point, your point is taken, but we have a, we have a motion and a second.
Well, I implore one of my fellow councilmembers to give me a chance to speak and vote against the calling the question.
Town Clerk, please.
Mayor, was there a second to the call of the question?
Councilwoman Earl.
Councilmember Calviannakis. Councilmember Skilicorn.
I recuse myself, so I abstain.
Councilmember Earl. Councilmember McMahon.
Nay.
Councilmember Watts.
I'd like to hear more. Nay.
Vice Mayor Toth.
Aye.
And Mayor Fridell.
Aye.
Mayor 3-3.
Three.
Three, three.
How'd you get in front of me?
Councilwoman Calviannakis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me. Also, thank you, Alan, for your recusal. That's very honorable, and it wasn't necessary. You could have not. And also, thank you, Jerry, for giving me a chance to speak. What I would just like to address tonight, I did hope that Alan would have softened his heart and made an apology, but he didn't. But, so, I would just like to say that what this was all about from the very beginning was the allegation that he had a First Amendment right to do what he did, when he disparaged the council and when he engaged a code officer, Luke Casey. He has asserted from the beginning and to the outside attorney that found him guilty, to the federal court, that he had a First Amendment right to that speech. And he actually, last week, he said the First Amendment doesn't allow for hurt feelings. And so, he's been very consistent on that. And so, all I want to do tonight is just address that one point. The First Amendment, while guaranteeing free speech, okay, doesn't guarantee all speech: incitement, violence, defamation, obscenity, you get the picture. It doesn't protect that kind of speech. There are also time, place, and manner regulations, which I've talked about with Rachel, and sign placement. Restrictions on free speech are time, place, and manner restrictions, and they include permitting requirements for, permitting requirements for parades, demonstrations, restrictions on knowing levels, and limitations on where signs can be posted. When it came to addressing this body and accusing Sandor of giving us money in favor for favorable votes, I consider that, I think that was defamation. And that's, that's the basis for that complaint. When it went to the code officer, and when you called him a sign thief, and it was published, and we saw it here tonight, that's defamation. He's not a public figure. He's a gentleman that was a former police officer, and so, he could have actually sued for defamation. That's why I think these charges are valid, because I don't believe the First Amendment applies here. And so, I just wanted to point that out, but maybe you don't realize that, but the First Amendment isn't the freedom to say anything that you want to any time. There are restrictions, and that restrictions that we have to observe, and it's in the Constitution. And the last thing I'd like to say is, we are all sworn, when we are taking our oath, to swear to the Constitution of the United States. And so, to me, that's why I filed the complaint, Alan. I wish you had a softer heart. I'd like to, I'd just like to vote to let him go away. He recanted. But since I didn't hear this, I will vote to keep them up with sadness in my heart.
Councilman Watts.
First, I'm going to say that I'm going to vote to cease the sanctions for time served. I think that the whole situation was taken out of context. I think that the backstory of other signs being stolen by whomever was not taken into account. I never heard Councilman Skilicorn say that he accused somebody of something with Sandor. He asked a question. I think, like I said previously when we were talking about Section 10, the violations were too ambiguous, too vague, and too egregious. A simple apology may have sufficed, but sometimes when you're backed into a corner, you won't back down. Period. And I don't blame it for that. So, did he, should he have said, "I'm sorry"? Maybe. But it's still, time served is enough, and enough is enough.
Councilwoman Earl.
To make it crystal clear, I understood that when we just voted on 10, that Skilicorn's sanctions are removed. But we're doing this here to just make sure it's, formally, we're removing them. But I also would like to state that it's time for forgiveness and grace. We need that on this council. We need that in this town. And Alan has served his time, so I move to, I'd like to make a motion to formally remove Alan Skilicorn's sanctions.
I believe that motion's already on the table, Councilwoman.
Good, oh, so I just made a big statement for nothing.
It was a good one.
Vice Mayor.
Okay, since I couldn't call the question, I'll guess, I guess I'll put my two cents in real quick. I was out of town for the council meeting that we actually voted on this. However, I was online, and I'd like to have a chance to repeat in person what I said that night. The procedure of these sanctions was completely unprecedented, completely outside of the norm. Whether or not you like Alan Skilicorn as a person, this was mishandled and handled in such a way that we have never seen in our town. Never have we voted to not allow someone to be vice mayor, to not allow them to have meetings with staff without a babysitter, or not allow them to attend events such as the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Conference. This is completely out of hand. And what happened to do that, first of all, it became a trial on everything he has ever done, which is not fair. Second of all, and did not, again, stay germane to what the actual complaint was regarding. So, in my mind, I still hold the same opinion I did a year ago. I would not be supportive of something that is so far out of procedure, even if it was someone that I don't politically agree with. The idea that this is just exonerating something that was egregious is a completely false narrative. This was out of hand. This was outside of regular procedure. I still am astonished that it was even done in the first place. That's my two cents.
I'll weigh in as well. When these sanctions were leveled, we violated our own code of procedure, not once but twice, by having it in a regular agenda meeting. I don't know if you guys remember me. We actually adjourned into an executive session, and then Alan decided to have the second meeting. Twice, we had it on a regular agenda when it shouldn't have been on either one of them. Alan, about an hour before the meeting, decided to let it go in public. So, that's the first thing I want to say. Secondly, when, when those sanctions were leveled, there was no time limit at that point. So, he's had them on over a year. And the councilwoman mentioned defamation by the, by the question that was asked. No names were asked in that question or mentioned in that question. That question was to everybody. So, I find it hard to be defamed by a question that was just thrown out about the Sandor experience. I'll call it that. And I also think, the night that I sat here and watched what unfolded, it's really hard for me, and I'm not going to accuse anybody of this, but four people had four prepared statements. That, to me, seemed a little bit on the edge of some sort of violation. We won't go there. But at any rate, a simple apology, like Councilman Watts said, probably would have resolved a lot of that. But I think the time served, I agree. And again, because there was no time limit attached to these sanctions, I think it's time to move on.
Just for the record, the outside attorney in the federal court agreed with my contention.
That doesn't mean I have to.
That is very true.
Can we vote now?
So, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yes.
We do? Okay. Town Clerk, please.
Councilmember Watts.
The motion is to lift the sanctions for time served. All right. Aye.
Councilmember Calviannakis.
Nay.
Councilmember McMahon.
Nay. Big nay.
Councilmember Earl.
Big yea. Yes.
Councilmember Skilicorn recused himself. Vice Mayor Toth.
Aye.
And Mayor Fridell.
Aye.
Mayor 4-2. I'm sorry.
And we did remove item E from the agenda, so we'll move on to counsel direction to the town manager. Vice Mayor.
I wanted to follow up on Mr. Blacker's statement to the council during Call to the Public. If we could explore how to add something to our legislative agenda or communicate with our legislators, I'm sure Mr. Colloden would be happy to talk to us since he was here today regarding the hazardous waste coming from California. I think that affects every municipality, and it would be good to show leadership here.
On that note, could we, could we send a letter to our legislature? Is everybody in agreement with that?
No. I don't know. I need time to look at it.
It doesn't have to be unanimous.
Yeah. We could say the majority. Everybody else in line with that?
Yes.
Okay. We'll do that as a majority, Rachel, if we can. And then I have one thing I'd like this council to consider. At some point, I'd like to bring back an agenda item. You know, we talked about the raises for our town staff. Our town staff has got a lot of work ahead of them, especially now with the Dark Sky Discovery Center grant that we're looking at funding. I'd like a future agenda item, if we can do this before the budget is fully approved. I'd like this town council to consider at least a quarter, maybe a half a percent more on that, on that cost of living adjustment. We've got a lot of work ahead of us, and we need this staff. So, I would really like to have, have us consider that.
A second.
Anybody have anything else? Future agenda items, anything, other than what I just brought up? Anybody?
One last thing.
Councilman.
You forgot to remind me about 4.2 point, whatever that was, with shall. And I didn't get my two cents in on that one. Things went too fast. It was, but if we can look at that again, I think there's a few other points that we ought to, at some future date, look at for amendment. It was 4.2 point B dot 2. And it was shall versus may.
That's right, 4.2 point 1, I got that written down here, too.
It's changing wording from may to shall.
To shall.
To what agenda item? To get an item on the agenda.
To get an item on the agenda.
Yeah. So, is that code rewrite?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think there's a lot of things to be brought up that we should at least consider.
I agree. I'd like to look at that again, maybe out of the context of the motion of the Skilicorn stuff, Jerry.
Yeah.
Would that, would you be amenable to that?
Are you, are you requesting a future agenda item?
Yeah. I would like to request a future agenda item that we do look at, the code rewrite without the emotion, and we can look at minor amendments and Councilmember Watts' amendment to shall, and just under more calmer circumstances, just so we can get that right.
Are you not calm?
I'm very calm.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Do we have a, do we have a third?
I think Rick.
I would be a third for the 4.2 B 2, the shall, the shall. I would be a third on the shall.
Well, is this going to come back, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn? We're adjourned, thank you.